Good evening. Notice of the Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, October 17, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to protect this flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord, we ask you to help each of us to look into our own hearts and examine ourselves humbly. Help us to confess to you the things we find that are not right and to humbly deal with those things, allow you to deal with those things before they grow into something worse. Lord, I thank you for our mayor and our commissioners and each presenter here today. We ask you to lead and guide each of them to do what's best for the City of Brownsville and for every citizen in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We will now have the mayor's activity update.
I have nothing to report this time.
Commissioner's activity update.
I'd like to thank the organizers of the Jazz Fest for another beautiful festival this weekend. Even the weather was good, so thank you for arranging that as well as the wonderful music. Also, thank you to our many partners that produced and partnered Seeklovia with the Jazz Fest. I know the bicycle parking at the Jazz Fest was overflowing, so that was very good to see, and fewer cars on the road and fewer parking problems in the downtown area. And lastly, I'd like to note that this weekend on Saturday, the Buena Vista Choice Neighborhood is presenting their first annual treasure hunt. There'll be storytime, snacks, and games, October 21st on Saturday at Edelstein Park from 10:00 AM to 12:00, so come on by.
May I make a statement, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd like to also announce that the Brownsville Historical Association will also be having a festival this weekend, a Paya Festival, Saturday, and the public's invited, beginning at 5:30, over here at the Linear Park, so hopefully some of you can come out and enjoy that festival.
All those events are great, and I encourage everybody to join. I've been to all of them. Okay? Proclamations?
Next, we have proclamations, the Housing America Month 2017.
John, you get a chance to be right in the middle. This is one of my happy group, my favorite group. Who's going to read the proclamation? Rose?
Whereas, the proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville designating the month of October as Housing America Month 2017. Whereas according to the State of the Nation's Housing Report, nearly 41 million households now pay more than half of their income for housing, with more than four out of five with incomes below $15,000 paying more than 30% for housing. In addition, according to current estimates, on any given night, there are nearly 650,000 homeless individuals nationwide and up to 3.5 million persons who experience homelessness at some point throughout the year. Whereas the Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville is the 12th largest housing authority in Texas and serves over 3,600 families housed through the Housing Choice Voucher, public housing, and tax credit programs. The Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville is committed to increasing affordable housing opportunities, empowering families, and working with its community stakeholders to promote holistic, resilient neighborhoods. Whereas it is the policy of the HACB to promote the general welfare of our community by providing access to affordable, quality housing and helping families achieve self-sufficiency through education and collaborative partnerships. The HACB's 2020 strategic plans' three main goals are housing, people, and communities. Whereas the HACB is proud to announce HUD's approval of its 18th development, Tangilo Quarters, which will be located in east Brownsville and will positively contribute to the city's East Brownsville Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan. And whereas the HACB is promoting October as Housing America Month 2017 as part of a national campaign to inform the public and decision-makers of the critical need to address the nation's housing and community development concerns. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby designate the month of October as Housing America Month 2017, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to support affordable housing and seek opportunities to end homelessness in our community. Done on this 17th day of October 2017. Signed, Antonio Martinez and the City Commission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission. My name is Carla Mancha, and I'm the CEO for the Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville. And on behalf of the HACB Board Commissioners and our team, I thank you for presenting this proclamation tonight to us. HACB is an engaged community partner who puts families first, and we strive every day to improve the housing conditions by promoting the creation of holistic communities. With me today, I'd like to introduce Vice Chairman John Cowan, and also starting here to my left, Letizia Gonzalez, Miguel Herrera, Janie Sanchez, Mandy Hernandez, Hilda Ledesma, and Vanessa Rellis, Gerardo Ortiz, Gabi Savala, and Ana Trejo Gonzalo Gonzalez, Isa Nunez, Jesús Ramirez. They represent our three main teams, housing, people, and communities. And tonight, we also are officially announcing, publicly announcing the development of our new public housing development that will be known as Tangilo Quarters, located on Roosevelt Street. And I would like for Gonzalo to just give a brief summary of that development. Gonzalo?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. On July 27th, Housing Authority of the City of Brownsville submitted an application to the HUD office for the development of Tangilo Quarters. This development consists of 18 houses, and it'll be located at 2225 Roosevelt Street, which is across from the Citrus Gardens Development. This development will offer safe, decent quality, affordable housing to the low-income families. Out of the 18 houses, two of the units will be ADA compliant. The development, again, will be in the East Brownsville Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, adopted by the City Commission in 2015. The development will consist of six two-bedroom, two-bath units with a minimum of 1,050 square feet, and 12 three-bedroom, two-bathroom units with a minimum of 1,150 square feet. Each unit will have an Energy Star stove refrigerator. They'll have air conditioning systems, which will be rated at 16 SEER. The development will also have parking, attached parking spaces. They'll have a porch for families to really gather. The development will also have a children's playground, a pavilion for picnics, and an existing community garden for families to grow their own vegetables and fruits. The developer of the construction will be Community Development Corporation of Brownsville. The cost of the development will be $2,783,550. The Housing Authority has been awarded replacement housing factor grants for the construction of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you. Thank you. It's okay. Thank you, Carla. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you for what you do for us.
Nice work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Carla, beautiful as always. That's my other girl. How's it going? Thank you. Just a heartfelt thanks to guys, all the time and effort that you all put in the Housing Authority and all the board members, the time that's spent there. You guys are doing a fabulous job, and I wish more people would take notice of the things that you're doing. And hopefully, Carla, you're doing a beautiful job of marketing, but keep up the good work. So, thank you. Okay. Employee of the Month?
Next, we have the presentation, Employee of the Month, Ms. Sylvia Ordeman from Grant's Manager.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this month's Employee of the Month is Sylvia Ordeman. She comes with us from the Office of Management and Grant Management and Community Development. She started with the city a year ago in September of 2016 as a grant writer. She just recently was promoted to Grant Manager of the department, and of course, she's doing an excellent job for us. She is a go-getter. She's a doer. She likes to get things done quickly. She has become very familiar with some of what it takes to get grant money for the city through the grants process, does a lot of analyzing work, and of course, she's done an excellent job for us since she's been with us for a very short period of time. With this, of course, she gets a wristwatch for Employee of the Month. You also get an engraved plaque, as well as a pin, and you also have one day off of your choice.
Wow.
Of course, it is also be some eligible for being selected as the Employee of the Year during our upcoming banquet award, which will be in December. So, again, please, again, we already congratulated her, so you want to say a few words for her?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'd like to first thank both of my directors who are here, Ms. Marina Solesy and Efren Trujillo. They provide a lot of support and guidance, and I'm very thankful for them, as well as all of my awesome coworkers. They make the office very fun and a great place to work in. And lastly, I'd like to thank my family and my husband for all of their support. So, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Next, we have the 2017 Annual Community Voice Campaign.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Well, I'll be presenting as far as what we're going to do for the next Community Voice Campaign. The Office of Grant Management and Community Development will be kicking off its sixth annual Community Voice Campaign during the first week of November. The Community Voice Campaign's mission is to ensure that the Brownsville residents are actively engaged in making recommendations for community improvements. Our department is responsible for administering U.S. HUD funds, and so the Community Voice Campaign is part of the Citizen Participation Plan, which describes to HUD our efforts for doing so. This is also part of our development of our five-year consolidated plan and our one-year action plan, which serves as the city's application for HUD funding. The goal is to increase the quality of life for our citizens through a wide range of community development activities, and these include, but are not limited, to affordable housing, improved infrastructure, and after-school programs. And so the Community Voice Campaign kicks off in November. It goes through March, and in April is when we compile all the data that was collected through those months, and we have it ready for the 2018-2019 funding cycle. The assessments are done in English and Spanish, and we go out to the different town hall meetings, different community events, the homeless shelter, and other areas. We also have public kiosks that are located at the La Plaza Terminal. We also have two at the public libraries at Southmost at the main library, and we have a portable kiosk, and those were awarded with funds from BCIC. As far as the survey results through our last campaign, we received close to 300 surveys, and they were, well, in the slide we had as far as the priorities, but the top three priorities included healthcare services, the drainage, and street improvements. And so how are these results used? The results are taken into account with the HUD funding cycle for the three programs that we have, which is CDBG, Home, and ESG. The funding was allocated to the top priorities, and some of the examples is palliative care and rehab services to children with special needs, so that was under the healthcare services, and the capital projects for street improvements in Brownsville and drainage improvements for Buena Vista Neighborhood. So, that's for the following year. The results are also helped to develop our one-year work plan under our Grants Division. The results are shared also at our Annual Community Development Summit, which for this year will be held on November 7th at the Brownsville Event Center. And at our summit, we invite all nonprofits who are interested in learning more about HUD funding and how to apply for the HUD funds. And so we share that information with them. And then we would like to thank all our partners that have supported us within the last Community Voice Campaign. They help us make a success. So, some of the examples were the Children's Brownsville Museum, where we hosted assessments at their events, the Housing Authority, where we've gone to the resident meetings, and other events as well. As far as our department contact information, it is on the website. The first CVC event for this year will be at the Ozenham Center on November 8th, and so we continue to look for new and innovative ways to receive community engagement, engage the residents. And so we invite organizations that would like to partner to please contact us. And then also commissioners, if you'd like for us to go to your district, please let us know, and we can set up events and outreach for that. So, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. I definitely want to set one up in District 2. In the past, I know that all of the districts and the at-large commissioners have used HUD money for extremely fundamental things. I know in District 2, we've done Portway Acres Park. Now there's a splash pad. We've put sidewalks along Robindale when we used to have three-year-old children waiting for, you know, their pre-K bus on the side of Robindale where there was no infrastructure. So, it is very important for the community to voice their concerns, voice any kind of infrastructure, after-school programs, things like this, things that are needed, things that your family needs, things that your neighborhoods need. Come to us and let us know, because this is a really good opportunity to use federal money to make a difference in your life. That's most definite. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And just anybody who's interested, the Astros are up three to nothing.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through F.
Mayor, I'd like to pull out of 5/8, I'd like to pull out from the previous minutes, the minutes in particular dealing with the Jibic appointment.
All right. Are we going to? Okay.
The matter was tabled, and I'd like to ask for a revote.
I think that's what...
We do have it as an agenda item, item number 11.
Okay.
One of the things that I felt was unfair was during the last vote, my vote was not counted, even though I voted "I." The records did not reflect it, and I know what I said, I know how I voted, but it was not counted in the official tally. Not that there's, you know, I just feel that I represent a lot of people, and I feel like whenever I vote for something, I would like to see it into the minutes of the city, into the history, and into the records. And ultimately, somebody lost their position to serve on a board because my vote was not tallied correctly. And I just would like the record to reflect, as I voted the first time, an "I" on that item.
I would object, Mayor.
I agree with you. Go ahead. I'd like to make this statement because that was brought to my attention. And so I asked the deputy city manager, as well as the assistant city manager, to watch the tape with us, and then in case I was wrong, because I was pretty sure that I didn't see you vote, and the tape definitely says you didn't vote. And it's very disturbing that we have something that's on tape and it's not reflected or changed. And I asked the city secretary that, a city secretary has to record everything as it is and cannot be changed because someone else says something different. So, with all due respect, I asked her to do that because that's her duty under the law. Okay? It's like a court reporter in a court proceeding. If someone says something, they have to record it, and it has to be recorded as it is. And so not only in this instance do we have the minutes that are incorrect when reflecting that you voted, because the tape also reflects that you did not vote. So, I don't know that this is an issue that needs to be discussed much further, but I did ask the city secretary that votes do not be changed if whatever it is, it is, and it should be recorded accordingly. If someone has a different recollection or would like to have some sort of change, then she has to notify the entire commission as to that request.
Your Honor, I think it's obvious from listening to the tape several times that there was no vote for "I" by Ms. Tetra. And I'm asking the chief of police to take this statement that she signed and investigate it and determine, after you listen to the tape, whether there should be perjury charges, because I think the citizens of Brownsville are getting tired of all the shenanigans around this commission. You'll have your chance. I'm not finished yet. So, I'm going to turn this over to the chief of police, and I'm going to ask you to investigate whether perjury's been committed in this proceeding.
Absolutely not, Commissioner, and I am entitled to a vote, and specifically, you can ask the two people next to me how I voted. I know you're far across the room, but I am entitled to a vote. I am not breaking the law. I am an elected official, and I am allowed to vote and vote people to serve on these boards where our community should have a voice.
We're going to have another vote in a minute on that item, but the record is to be correct.
It has been cleared out. The minutes have to be changed to reflect what actually happened. We can note everybody's disagreements, whatever. We're going to do it again regardless, so...
Mayor, I still have a comment. We're elected officials.
Don't direct your comment to me, Ms. Ordeman.
Okay. And I tell you what, if you all...
No, no.
No, I'll tell you what. We can do this at a later time.
No, no, no.
I mean, if you want to talk about the minutes, that's one thing.
Yeah. I think this is a pretty good time.
Don't direct your comment to me, Ms. Ordeman.
Sir, you do yourself have a right to the chair.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not going to be talking to...
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm going to stop. Both of you, both, no. I'm not going to let this go on. Okay? I'm sorry.
Mayor, I disagree. I have a right to be heard.
Duly noted, duly noted.
Mayor, I have a right to be heard, Mayor.
Either that, or we're not going to interrupt this meeting by doing that. We're not going to have that.
There is a point of order, Mayor.
Okay, this discussion is over.
No, sir.
Yes, sir, it is.
You're making a circus out of the City Commission. We are elected officials, and we can speak amongst each other.
Commissioner Yenvoria, that is it.
No, sir. No.
Yes.
No, sir.
Okay. If we're going to have a dis... I'm going to ask that you be excused from here.
I will not be excused, sir.
Okay, then you're going to have to behave. Period. Okay. If we have anything else about the minutes, we will talk about it, but if they have any corrections or deletions or changes to the minutes, we've discussed that item, and we're going to vote on it again, which is fine. Anything else? Okay. Consent item, so that one's going to be out of the consent item, but every other one, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, the motion is to approve all consent agenda items, or with the exception of letter "A"?
With the exception of "A."
With the exception of the minutes, and in relation to that one particular item. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we've discussed it. Public hearings, item number six.
Next, we have public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-061 to rezon from Dwelling Z to General Retail H for 0.7651 acres of Lot 4, El Jardín Re subdivision, Block 204, and .2267 acres of Abstract 2, Lopez High School subdivision, Part Lot 1, Block 1, located at 3228 South Dakota Avenue.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. The first case is at the corner of Maverick in South Dakota. They currently have Dwelling Z, and they're asking to rezone to General Retail H. As you can see, it's at the edge of our city limits. The surrounding area is zone dwelling. This site is also part of the emerging City East District, which should be flexible and split between residential and non-residential uses. To the north and to the east is Lopez Early College High School. To the south, which is outside of the city limits, it's in our ETJ, are single-family dwellings. And to the west is zone dwelling, but it's currently vacant land. There were 31 mailouts and zero written opposition to this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezone from Dwelling Z to General Retail H.
Anyone here on this issue?
Want to close?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2017-062 to rezon from Light Retail X to Dwelling G for acres, .73 acres out of 51.55 acre tract of lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Block 115 of El Jardín Re subdivision located near FM 511 North Charmaine Lane.
This area is currently zoned Light Retail X, and they're asking to change it to Dwelling As you can see, to the west is Dwelling, and to the south is Dwelling as well as Light It is part of the Loop Corridor, according to our future land use map, which is a flexible district that is a mix of residential, institutional, industrial, and community facilities. The average density should be four dwelling units per acre and should primarily be single-family In this map, you can see to the north and to the east, and for a large part to the south, is currently vacant land. To the west and a little further south, it is currently single-family dwellings. There were 21 mailouts and zero written opposition to this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezone from Light Retail X to Dwelling G.
Anyone else on this issue? It's a public hearing. If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Close? Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Next, we have the public comment period. I do have three citizens that signed up. First, we have Mr. Erasmo Castro.
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, and most importantly, citizens of Brownsville. I'm here again today to exercise my right as a citizen of this beautiful city to address you, our city's leaders. The same leaders we have entrusted with our well-being and livelihoods so that they could make collective decisions that would benefit Brownsville as a whole and not self or selected few. I'm here again to speak on behalf of those who have long been forgotten by the political process, the compadismo, and general lack of compassion and empathy that has plagued our city over the last, past so many years. I'm here again to be a voice for those whose voices have been silenced by those whose vision of Brownsville is one of selfishness, who to this day refuse to put the people first. In the last month... In the last month, we have lost a city attorney, a fire chief, we have lost a commissioner who did the right thing by resigning after spewing hateful rhetoric, only to rescind his resignation. Today, we lose another member of city government, of city management, under the cloud of alleged impropriety and looking away whilst department heads and buddies have run amok like foxes in a hen house. Today, our former fire chief was arrested on charges of theft by a public servant, how many more arrests are right around the corner? How many more embarrassing moments for our city? My work function here in the city of Brownsville is maintaining my friends and family informed of the happenings of the day. Our previous city manager once made mention to me that I should be writing about positive things and not focus on the negatives. I mentioned to him then what I share with you today, we that work in informing yearn for the day when all we can write about is positives. Brownsville is making national headlines for all the wrong reasons. The residents of Brownsville are being fooled by individuals who claim to want change, only to find out that the only change they seek is the extra change in their pockets at the end of the day. We have been through this before, and we, as a community, will overcome together, but a dark cloud still looms overhead us. I'm here today to request that each of you take a pledge to fight corruption that has sadly become commonplace, and that you look into each and every matter before you and before us, and do everything in your power to end whatever nonsense has become of us. One of the promises you made, Mayor, when you first ran for our seat, was to implement a code of ethics, which never came to fruition. Ethics, transparency, and accountability are mere words used whenever votes are sought. I am reminded of the saying, fool me once, shame on me, fool me twice, shame on you. The citizens of Brownsville are getting tired of being fooled, and yes, Commissioner Longoria, this is but a circus. Thank you all.
Next, we have Mr. Pedro Hernandez. Would you like to address the commission? Oh, are you Mr. Hernandez? Okay, no, okay, only the ones that signed in, sir. Next, we have Ms. Letitia Perez-Garcia.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commissioners. I'm glad to come before you because we have so many issues before this town, and we're all running amok and trying to make some sense out of it, and we don't know what's going on. My issues are this, a pay-for-play activity allegedly involving our city manager, Mr. Kabler, and fire chief, Elisondo, and the activities, and I won't go on to say what they are, just activities. Citizens and residents and everybody around are appalled and quite frankly disgusted, very disgusted. Insofar as these activities, Mr. Kabler, city manager, has asked for a retirement with full benefit packages without, without a care in the world, imagine that, imagine that, without a care in the world. As I try to put my jaw back into my socket, how low do we have to sink in this city? What are we doing? Does anybody care? I mean, you all are, you know, we elected all of you, so you can care, so you can make a decision, so you can help us rise above, not stay at the same level and below. That's not what you are here for, and that's not what we expect out of you. Much more, much, much more. Insofar as Mr. Kabler, he lines his, he could line his pockets, get a beautiful benefit package and everything of the like, and Mr. Elisondo gets presumably arrested. Prosecutorial privilege all the time in Brownsville? Uno sí, uno no, el que me gustó y el que no. What's wrong? What's wrong with his picture? Why can't we rise above a bunch of intelligent professionals, I mean, very, very, seasoned, all of you, in your own respect, very seasoned? Okay, and my take on this is, with city manager Kabler, fire him. Does he deserve a benefit package?
One minute.
With all the piochitas, with all the ribbons? I don't think so, but that's my take, okay? And I'm sure a lot of people feel the same way. Okay, do we have to have everything, do we have to swallow everything and the fallout from mistake after mistake after mistake? Don't we deserve better? Don't we deserve better representation at all levels of government, not just city, county, state, whoever you are? You are given a public position to defend the public, to go forward, to look, to, to analyze, to make the right decision, not just sweep it under the carpet. Of course, we remember, of course. Our, our, our families and our incomes, our retirements are tied to your decisions across the board, not just yours, many others. But Brownsville does deserve better, better representation, I do believe so, and for my two cents, ya vas. Gracias.
Thank you, Letitia. Item number nine.
Next, we have items for individual consideration, action item number nine, consideration in action to accept the letter of retirement from Charlie Kabler and set a date on which the office of the city manager is officially vacated.
Under the city charter, it is our duty and obligation, when we see a letter of retirement, which we have in our packets, to accept, formally accept the retirement of our city manager. So I would entertain a motion to accept the letter of resignation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, motion carries.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Do you need a roll call? I think we have one abstention, which is Commissioner Niese.
Commissioner Niese.
Affirmative, Commissioner.
Commissioner Mungia.
Mungia, yes?
Yes. Commissioner Gawain? Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Tetra?
Yes.
Commissioner Longoria?
Excuse me, I would also word the, the motion to set the date where the position is vacated, as he is a public official.
Well, he, he asked this letter effi- effectively immediately, so we'll do it as of today, once we, I think the legal part of it says, you gotta do it, from what I understood, the law, is that you have, once you accept that letter of retirement and he asked to do it immediately, it becomes effectively as of today when we, the motion passes.
That's fine.
Okay? All right.
Can I make a motion to reflect the minutes that'd be effective, 10/17/17?
All right.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, we got a second, all those in favor of that motion.
I'm abstaining.
I think you have the same motion, the same side motion as abstaining by Commissioner Niese, and then a yes on the rest of the other commissioners, okay? Is that correct, guys?
Yes, right.
All right.
Thank you.
Item number 10.
Next, we have action item number 10, consideration in action to appoint seven members to the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city commissioners. On August 15th, you adopted and approved an ordinance to reduce the number of voting members of the Historical Preservation Board, and the reason was, the reason wants to follow the standards of the rest of the votes here in the, in the city, and also to, just to follow the recommendations given by the Texas Historical Commission of certain kind of qualified people to, to serve for the city of Brownsville. So, those recommendations given by the Texas Historical Commission, you can see over there, is the archaeologist, historian, architectural historian, architect, heritage tourism professional, historic property owner, and professional engineer. So, we opened the, the applications during one month, and there were the following applicants that you can see in the list, and of those applicants, initially five, are aligned to the recommendation of the, the recommendations given by the Texas Historical Commission, those are the archaeologists, the historian, the architectural historian, the architect, and the heritage tourism professional. The ordinance that was approved also established that only can be one qualified member per qualification, that means that those two owners that appear on the list, you should have initially to, to choose one of those, and the vacant chair, that's the professional engineer, is right now vacant, but at the same time, we have two attorneys that could perfectly sit on the, on the vacant chair.
Okay, so, the only ones that you have are Trey Mendez and Fernando Baillie that have, they're both historical property owners, so you have to choose between one of, or two, I mean, one of those?
No, no, you can, you can, I mean, the, the, the ordinance says that per qualification, you can only choose one. That does not mean that these owners could be sitting in the owner's chair, and in the meanwhile, on the, on the vacant chair of the engineer, you know?
Okay.
All right.
So, let me see, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine applicants?
Nine applicants for seven chairs.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying to you is that on both of those property owners, historic property owners and lawyers, that's where you have two, two people that are.
That's right.
So, what my suggestion is, that you have one property owner and one lawyer, it doesn't make any difference who the commission signs, but that way you have one for each category.
That's right.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
Sure.
So, I'll entertain whatever action the, we have to select seven members to the Historic Preservation.
I'd like to move to a point, Calvin Walker.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, in, okay, I just thought it'd be easier.
We could do it as a slate, but what is it that, that you're looking for in the vacancy?
I'm just saying that you, you've got nine applicants, and there's only two with, that are overlays, in other words, you have two historic property owners and two lawyers, and I'm suggesting that you have your whole slate, but the only thing that you gotta do is you gotta pick out one between Fernando Baillie and Trey Mendez and Serena Putinet and Joseph A. Rodriguez, so that you have one from each category. You see what I'm saying? But, but we can go individually if you'd like, because I mean, you only have one archaeologist.
I'll make a motion that those five, first five, be nominated.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we know we have five members.
I nominate Trey Mendez. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have, now we have Trey as a historic property owner, and now you, you've got, you've got, well, you've got that vacant professional engineer, now you've got one more that you need, either between Serena Putinet and Joseph Rodriguez, according to the list of applicants. Do I hear a nomination?
Make a motion to appoint Joseph Rodriguez.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you, now you have your seven. Mr. Meliz, thank you so much, appreciate it. Number 11.
Before I read the agenda item, I would like to kindly ask if when you all do your votes, if you all can do them directly to the microphone, that way, make sure.
Okay.
We're just doing a roll call.
And we'll do a roll call, too.
Okay.
Okay. Action item number 11, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation.
Mayor, members of the city commission, the composition of the GBC board is a five-member board with the appointments being the full responsibility of city commission, each member serving at least a four-year term, not to exceed two terms. The GBC board has had a vacancy for six months now, which was a position that was vacated by then Commissioner Deborah Portillo, so that's for like six months. I will say that we're in a crucial time right now, as we're in the process of rebuilding organization, there's some important decisions that need to be made here in the next six to eight months, not only for the future of this organization, but for the future of this community, and which, I'll be coming back in, in November to provide a one-year status update on the new GBC operations. I will say that we're not a finished product, but we're headed in the right direction, and, and we're almost there. There's seven individuals that have applied for the vacant GBC position, and now more than ever, these are very powerful positions, in the sense that, three reasons, they oversee a healthy budget, it's a, a multimillion dollar budget, and we wanna keep it that way, that's used for incentives, so that's reason number two. It's, you know, these board members have, right now there's four board members, have the ability to incentivize projects, new companies coming into town, a recruitment tool for companies that are looking to help grow this community, and number three is the access to leads, having access to these new companies that are coming into our community, and, and being able to be confidential about these companies, so outside of the GBC staff, knowing who's coming in, the GBC board is the next one that's gonna be privy to these companies coming in, so being able to practice ethics as well as confidentiality. So, the seven individuals that have applied, as you can see, are Mr. Anchor Jensen, Arturo Trevino, Eliseo D'Avila, Erasmo Castro, Esteban Guerra, Nick Serafi, and Ms. Nurith Galonsky. So outside of that, for those who are not selected, I will say that I'll be reaching out to the other members, because we're now creating a series up to like 12, between 12 to 10, 12 committees, to help us come up with ideas on how to better recruit and grow this community, something that in my previous role was not done very well, so now we're gonna be opening up. That being said, at this time, the GBC staff recommends the appointment of one member to the GBC board.
Ms. Nurith Galonsky?
Second.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Ms. Nurith Galonsky?
Nurith Galonsky, okay, you got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can we get a, I need a roll call, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Tetra?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gawain?
Aye.
Commissioner Mungia and Niese. Okay, thank you.
You have, you have your member, go to work. Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have action item number 12, consideration in action for the city of Brownsville to enter into contract with the Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish firefighting services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designed by Zone Number One on the official Fire Protection Service Zone Map of the Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners, this is a renewal that's done every year with the Cameron County ESD Number One to furnish emergency medical service and firefighting services to the ESD Zone Number One. There's not any changes to the contract from here to here.
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you want a roll call? I think everybody voted yes, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have action item number 13, consideration in action for the city of Brownsville to enter into a contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish ambulance and emergency medical services to the unincorporated area of Cameron County designed by Zone Number One on the official Fire Protection Service Zone Map of the Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One.
The first one was for fire, this one is for all ambulance and emergency medical services for the same zone map.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or not voting, aye? I think we got a full vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And now you told me, Madam Secretary, that you have to go to item number 17 before you go to item number 14?
At this time, yes, at this time, we would like to move item number 17 before item number 14, and the action item number 17 is consideration in action on resolution number 2017-061 to enter into cooperative agreement with a goodbye purchasing program.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners, I would like to request authorization to, to set resolution number 2017-061, authorizing a cooperative agreement between the city of Brownsville, Texas, and the goodbye purchasing program. This is, this is another cooperative that we have, as per local government code, section 271, we're allowed to, to, to award inner-local and cooperative contracts for purchases of goods and services.
Want to approve?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, you got a motion and approval discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, have you reached out to any other purchasing cooperatives other than goodbye?
Yes, sir, we, we also have another cooperative to be presented tonight, so that will, that will be in the list of the co-ops, like US Communities, we have TIPS, TABs, we have TCBN, we have BiBor, we have AGAC. Byboard, we have HEAC, and of course, this one, and we're also gonna present the other one by the name of Pace Cooperative.
So we're members of Byboard?
That's correct, sir.
And, and the other ones that you mentioned?
Yes, also, we also have interlocal agreements through the Department of Information and Resources through the state, Texas Mass., which is the Texas Multiple Award Schedule, TIBH, the Texas Institute for the Blind and the Handicap, TCI, Texas Correctional Industries, GSA, which is the General Services Administration, and I believe there's three more.
Is this Goodbye purchasing program in Region Two ESC?
This one.
Educational Services Cooperatives, I think Region Two?
It is in Region Two, yes.
Do you know where that is?
Region Two, it's in, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
It's in Corpus Christi.
That's correct.
And the other one, the next item is in San Antonio, and there's, Region One is in Brownsville. And what I'm wondering is why you wanna go to Corpus Christi, and also why you're not giving the local people a chance to bid on this bucket truck that you're trying to bring in on number fourteen? Why, why aren't we trying locally first? Because good economic development requires us to try to do things locally first.
That's correct.
So, my question is, why don't you give our local people, dealers, a chance at the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar bucket truck?
We do, we do have that, and actually, the, the next item that I'm gonna present for the bucket truck, we got, we obtained three quotes, one being Goodbye, the other one was out of Freightliners, uh, and this was a Byboard, and this was from, uh, from Brownsville. And then I have another one from Byboard, which is the third quote, um, but this was the, the, the lowest, the lowest quote.
When you go through a purchasing cooperative, you don't bid locally, right?
No, what we do is, we, uh, if, if it's, uh, the regular white fleet, uh, we, we go out for bids, and we also look, look to the.
Did you, did you bid locally for the bucket truck?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
We only, we only, we only requested a, a, a quote from Freightliners of Austin, and the representative is here in the valley.
Okay, so when you went through the, the Byboard, you bypass our local dealers, right?
No, sometimes there's, there's local dealers that belong to these cooperatives.
Did any of them bid?
Uh, bec- no, because they don't, they don't have the type of a bucket truck that, that the Parks Department is looking for.
It's a Ford two fifty, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
It's a Ford two fifty? The bucket truck?
It is. Let me, let me go to the truck.
Rush Truck Centers from Brownsville.
Rush?
Rush Truck Centers from Brownsville.
Oh, the Byboard quote also, I'm sorry, that we have is Rush Truck Centers out of Brownsville, that's correct, but their bid was, was higher than Salisbury. It was twenty thousand, more or less.
Well, okay, all right. I'm just saying that we should give our local people a chance, even if we spend a little bit more, because it stays here locally.
And we did, Commissioner.
You didn't put out bids in the paper asking for local bids, did you?
No, sir, because when, when, because when we, we did the research, we found out that there were some already established under these cooperatives.
So you bypass our local people, right? I mean, that's the bottom line, right?
Sometimes we do, when, when we, when we find that the price is lower with the co-ops.
I have no further comments or questions.
Okay, that's the discussion, we have a motion and a second on, on the table. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we also get a roll call, 'cause I didn't hear this?
Just a second, I haven't, I haven't. Excuse me, I haven't asked for, for anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so now you can, Commissioner, that's a nay, and three ayes, and the ayes carry.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause Jessica, I guess, stepped out for a second. So, that, that motion carries. Next item, I guess you're gonna go to item number?
Yes, next item is action item number fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Consideration action to approve the purchase of a new bucket truck for the Parks Department.
Like I mentioned before, I would like to request the authorization to award a contract for the purchase of a bucket truck. This is gonna be Salisbury Ford, out of Salisbury, Texas, which is a participant of a Goodbye Cooperative. Uh, we're talking about a purchase of a new bucket truck for a total price of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. We did, uh, also research, uh, other two co-ops, but this, this is the, the low, the lowest quote, so staff would like to recommend, uh, awarding the contract.
Are, are you required to have an interlocal agreement before you can enter into negotiations with Goodbye?
Yes, sir. Government Code, section two seventy-one states that before, before the city, before municipality enters into an interlocal, we have to present a resolution or an acceptance between the city and the other entity.
My question is, when you negotiated with Goodbye for the purchase of this truck, weren't you required to have an interlocal agreement in place before you did it?
Yes, correct.
Kinda like how you brought the item tonight, you brought the item before you even had an interlocal agreement, which you still don't have. Now, are you required to negotiate after you get the interlocal agreement, or can you do it before?
No, actually, actually, the prices are set, set already, set up on, under these, these guidelines, under each cooperative.
Okay. When you go and talk to Goodbye, are you required to have an interlocal agreement in place first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did you?
No, sir. That's why we presented the item before you.
So you illegally negotiated with them for this purchase, right?
No, sir, we didn't negotiate. We, we presented this for acceptance of the purchase.
How did you get a price from them?
We requested, we requested a, a, a price.
From Goodbye?
From Goodbye.
Without an interlocal agreement in place?
The, the, the thing is, there was gonna be an interlocal agreement to be presented to the previous city commission.
Was going to be. There was going to be, means there wasn't, right?
It wasn't until, until today.
All right, I think we've established that the interlocal agreement has not been done, and you negotiated before you had an interlocal agreement. Now, what is the proper procedure, should you have an interlocal, uh, uh, agreement before you negotiate, or such? Michael, maybe you can shift some light?
Mayor, it's what we do with many purchases. You go out for quotes, we go out for quotes for a bicycles or for that. We don't have an agreement with them. So the, the question is here, is Byboard has a fixed price cost. So then we looked, and we looked at the fixed, the fixed price, I believe, at other areas. So we saw that Byboard had the best price. We, we identified that there was no, no inter, Goodbye, sorry, there was no Goodbye, there was no interlocal agreement set. So procedurally, we saw the price is good, so the idea was to bring the interlocal, to see if it was approved. If it's not, if it's denied, then we don't do the price with the Byboard. So there was a negotiation, it was just a set price of the vehicle.
So, so you don't negotiate with them to get a better price?
It's already a set price, sir, that, that it's under the contract, what, what it is.
So, yeah, so, Commissioner, you're correct. The, the negotiation isn't on the vehicle, it's the set price, correct?
It's the set price.
Set price.
Yeah, so, so, obviously, it's sort of like some of these new, where you buy cars, and they give you the, there, there is no negotiations. You just have the Byboard, you have the, the prices there. We can take a look at it, but at this particular point, uh, what you, Mike, I'm gonna ask you to please kinda take a look at the procedure and how, you know, if, if there's any way to improve it, otherwise.
It's because we did a resolution, but we still don't have an agreement.
No, I know we have a resolution back in October, that's what I'm saying, is that there was a resolution, I recall that, coming back, back then, uh, and, but we were never brought back an interlocal agreement to approve.
But you just, we just passed, or I didn't, but y'all just passed for an agreement, to enter, a resolution to enter into an agreement.
No, I agree, I, I, I understand. The, the, the resolution was to enter an agreement, we just never got that agreement back.
Yes.
And that's, Michael, I want you to take a look at it now. Is there, was that a discussion, or was there a motion?
I'll move to table this.
Okay, uh, is there a second on the move, on the move, motion to table?
Are we tabling both items, or just the bucket truck?
Fourteen is what we're on.
Yeah, just fourteen. Uh, and I'm assuming that the reason is to bring back a, an agreement before we, we move forward, 'cause I think, from a legal standpoint, Ms. Allison, I think you might have an, an issue.
Isn't this standard procurement? Isn't, doesn't this fall within the standard procurement laws and processes? We've done it before, this is not something new.
Well, whether we, whether we've done it before or not, is really not the issue.
Mayor, we haven't been in violation of anything, Mayor, this is something that happens.
All right, okay.
Every, every, all the time.
It's not the normal procurement procedures, Mayor.
All right, guys, just a second, let's, 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 let's have, there's a second? All those in favor of motion to table, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, aye. Those against?
Aye.
Okay, one against, one abstention. I don't even, so it's, it, the table passes, okay? So that's for item number fourteen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, next, next item.
Action item number fifteen, consideration and action on fiscal year twenty eighteen, administrative services agreement for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Castillo with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. The item that we have for your consideration today is the fiscal year twenty eighteen administrative services agreement. Basically, you see on your packet, the second page of the agreement stipulates the description of the general and administrative services. It's continuously been the services that we receive from the city, it's just that now they have been specified, and it's more of a, not limited to, and includes, uh, the items from recordation of BCIC financial affairs, the preparation of financial reports thereof, the preparation of budget thereof, the issuance of financial reports where required, the maintenance of, the maintenance of financial records and ledgers, of the corporation and legal services, human resources services, IT, MIS services, payroll, timekeeping, accounts payables, retirement services, health insurance coverage, employee benefits package, credit rating assistance, and bond services. And it's basically continuously the service that we have received for many years. The, on section two of the agreement, you'll see the compensation continues being twenty-four thousand dollars, and the term of agreement will be effective October the first, and terminating on September the thirtieth of twenty eighteen. Are there any questions?
If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, just like, just to mention that we'll be back next week, uh, next commission meeting, with, uh, agenda item for a workshop, and also an extension of the fiscal year twenty seventeen, uh, sports park agreement.
Okay.
And we can work together collaboratively to move forward our sports park complex.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, item number?
Next, we have, uh, action item number sixteen, consideration and action to request authorization to approve the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro Department to offer a free ride day on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Sarah Giovannick, and along with me is Robert J. Garza. We're from the Office of Brownsville Metro. The week of October twenty-third, twenty seventeen, and along, will be hosting several events recognizing Public Transit Week. It will start off with a press conference on Monday, October twenty-third, and end on Friday, October twenty-seventh, with the Second Annual Fall Festival Event at La Plaza at Brownsville Terminal. On Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen, to demonstrate our appreciation to all users of Brownsville Metro services, and encouraging all citizens of Brownsville to ride Brownsville Metro's public transit services for free. The event is expected to save our riders approximately three thousand five hundred fares. Therefore, Brownsville Metro is respectfully requesting your approval to offer a free ride day on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen. Lastly, if accepted, attached are the English and Spanish flyers that you can see. That's the one in English, that's the one in Spanish, that we'll go ahead and put on our website, not only that, but on our buses. Thank you.
That's, that sounds like the price is right.
This is the Second Annual Fest, and it was very successful last year, we appreciate your support. It's just one day, one free day, and the citizens really appreciate it, and encourages all the public to come and try to transit for one day.
I know, I got a lot of great feedback the last year. It was, people, you know, uh, it being free is, is good. Anyway.
Motion to approve?